Ready? Good morning. This is a selectmen's meeting for Monday, July 6th, Towne of Tuftonborough. It was a forum. A brief message. Members of the public wishing to attend this meeting electronically, please join from your computer, tablet, or smartphone by contacting slash slash global dot go to meeting dot com slash join slash nine nine six four three three nine four one. That's nine nine six four three nine four one. You can also listen via telephone toll free, nine eight seven seven three oh nine two oh seven. Access code nine nine six dash four three three dash nine four one. Please note that you'll be able to interact on public input using the online service. However, you will only be able to listen to the meeting via telephone. Excuse me. If you have any issues attending this meeting electronically using the aforementioned instructions, please call six oh three five six nine five nine oh three. That number is six oh three five six nine five nine oh three. The three selectmen, I will introduce ourselves. Chairman Lloyd Wood.
Bill Marcusson.
Chief Paul. As part of the call to order, we'd ask Bob Tev join you people's stand. Can we say?
I believe in the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, equal rights and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob, for your service. Our first item of business is that our brief notice was posted. The board of selectmen will hold a public information session on the proposed police station project on Monday, July 6th, 2020, at nine AM at the townhouse, 247 Middle Road, Center, Tuftonborough, New Hampshire. Time will be provided to review and discuss the proposed facility site and location, building plans, and anticipated construction process and costs. I'll introduce Chief Shadori. Good morning, sir. One thing when you do speak, it just adds that you give the secretary your name, okay? And we may need to maintain social distance, and we're not permitted to see. Thank you. Right, sir.
Okay. That is kind of a locker room of the building. So, floor plan. Looking through the history of, first, we did a need assessment with all the architects. And they come fresh, and they came to about the same need assessment that we had several years ago, when it was going to be in place, the library, in the old library building. It matched up with what was done before by another group, when it was going to be combined with the fire station at the site where the fire station is now. And it's very similar in size to what was proposed back when Stewart did it. And they did their needs assessment over at the same spot, the Dearborn property. That's where this is proposed, at the Dearborn property. So, what you've got, and I know there's a couple, this is a garage. It says large evidence, proprietary garage. So, we have a two-bedroom garage here, which is essentially what we have now. This has evidence processing. It's not just evidence, it's anything that involves like chemicals that we don't want to spill, any plate towels in the building. That's where weapons cleaning will be done. That's where evidence will be, you know, fingerprint dusted. It will be cyanocryly or superglue fuming. It's also where we'll store our supplies, because right now, they're kind of scattered in several different places. This is the actual only place where evidence is stored, it's right there. You know, we've talked about maybe renaming this evidence room and possibly changing some of the names there. This is our mechanical, this is a breakroom roll call area, but that's more of a breakroom. It's a place where we have a counter to eat, so we're not eating there at desk. We can have our table there, microwave, sink, that sort of stuff. In here, an interview room, which is down, this is kind of a segregated area, secured area. Anybody in here without a key cannot get through that way. This will be reception, administration will be right here. This is a public bathroom right here. It's a room for any of the public that wants to come in and meet. That's where you'd meet with them. This interview room here, it says two interview rooms, but this is really more for dealing with somebody that's been under arrest. This is an area where you can fingerprint, photograph, and deal with that sort of information, but this is where you need to sit down if you need to talk to somebody that needs to be in a secure area. This is for the public access, they can pop in here. And I believe the way this is set up, it's kind of also can be a safety room, if you will. So, somebody running in here that needs to get away from somebody that might be following them, could go and lock themselves in there, we can get back in through there. And this is just deputy chief, it's actually like supervisor's office, chief's office. Conference room with an emergency operations center, if we need that, a meeting. It's also a place that we can do training. We have a locker room, and that's for everybody. And over here would be like where you change, and then, and there's a shower there too, and then there's a bathroom there. It really is not, and this is some of our storage here. We have a meeting room here, because we have to maintain separation for juveniles. They can't be in a secure facility. They have to be in a spot where they have sound separation from here and from here. And they also cannot be in a secured room. This is where our radio and our servers would be for computer, for our video system, recording system. And there's a staff bathroom here. Does anything, Paul?
That's Phil, with the, all the architects. Just quickly review, we did look at more options, more replacements. So, they used to have additional additions. Also, it's higher than office facilities, in location. So, decided to get higher additions to the Dearborn place, to the Dearborn. If this location was a condition, it was probably the least possible, but it was nearly a thousand. Well, didn't satisfy all the requirements. The Dearborn site is cost-effective. Site satisfied with all of the elements of the purpose. I just wanted to iterate that. He's trying to clearly operate his mathematics time, not going to hold. Always this meeting, to get the public input, there's definitely opportunities for of the division to be, um, one calling in, um, making my right, right? But everybody has some particular input.
To show, maybe just to, to make how it fit on the land. Just to be Middle Road, library's over here. Pull in, there's be public parking here, overflow and staff here. This is not a building, that's a fenced-in area for like vehicles or other large items that would have to be secured. That's how that would sit on the property. Basically, if you know the property drops off this way, it drops off that way. So, it sits kind of in that flat area up front to kind of keep, be more cost-effective, I guess. That's how you cited it, right? Can't speak for you, but that's the idea. So, that's the siding of it, across from, like I said, across from the library.
Do you need to burn something? You might still put an ECU on, because the camera's getting a pretty nice look. Yep, thank you.
Okay, for the other backup?
That would be great, thank you.
So, again, for those who are watching the camera, we're being recorded anyways. Middle Road, library, should be employee plus extra parking, and then staff, and this is disabled parking right there. Walking disability parking. And then that's, it's not a building, that's a chain link area. All of it is chain link fence. This is, so what you've got, where the staff would be, windows, an access window. Looking at what we're dealing with, with what we dealt with COVID, one of the issues is we don't have a transaction window. No way to really provide that, this will provide that. Will I be able to space some people out, not have them sitting so close together? I mean, that's been something that we've obviously had to think about recently. It's one floor. There is patterns for possible photovoltaics that, I think the thought was not to put it on the roof though. It would probably be towards the, maybe towards the back or something, is what we talked about. Photovoltaic to offset some of the cost of utilities.
Have a question. Question, sir. Just name for the secretary.
I just, I noticed you, I just well thought out, I think. I see you have a security area. That's not intended, I believe, for retention, is that right for you? It's a processing, a processing area.
We are not, we can't do detention, extended detention for doing a 24-hour staffing. Even if we did, we wouldn't do that, because we, you need somebody there 24 hours, monitoring and constantly. Even 24-hour departments in the county do not, Conway's only one, and I know all that does, well, sometimes hold people overnight, but other ones don't. You would, just holding cells just temporary, like you need paperwork, that sort of thing. It's not meant for overnight or hours upon hours. It might be in a case where we have to have somebody and wait for their ride to show up. But that's it. And obviously, we'll have, you know, policy in place where they can't have shoelaces, belts, eyes. Maybe they could hurt themselves while they're in there, not be, and it'll be a camera monitoring them. But that is only for temporary housing while you're dealing with other things that you may not be able to monitor them 24, well, not 24, every second, watch them, because you can step out of the room to get some paperwork or something. But we would definitely not be holding anybody overnight or anything like that.
Lloyd, you got another question?
Lloyd, chairman.
There's a question, go ahead.
So, this is slab construction? Is it a slab?
It is on a slab, yes.
Do you know, have you, do you feel comfortable with your adequate record retention?
Um, I never know. You know, I mean, there's some things we have to hold forever, some we only have to hold a year. There's, and then there's moves to make, some things help in pass the bill to eliminate the statute of limitations on sexual assault. So, I mean, you have to hold that longer. Who knows? But that could always, things could change later on. The records are right in here, there's, you know, probably other places that could repurpose if needed to down the road. I mean, I think just adequate, how, do you know how big this room is? Got to be at least 10 feet, I think. On the record, it's here, right here. Quarter inch equals a foot, so.
The design to.
So, it's probably about eight to 10 feet, so like a file cabinet, 18 inches.
I programmed here with about 60, 30 per archive, record, 30, 30.
Some of the, some of the current records would be in this area anyways. Stuff we fish through, it's more likely to need, you know, if somebody comes to the window, hey, I need an access report room. Last month, that's going to be in this area. This is going to be the stuff from, I need a record from 2013 on a stolen gun, I think we just had to hook up. That sort of stuff would be back here. This would be the records that, so this person doesn't have to go fishing for them out of sight, they can come over here and do it.
Did you consider a lot of complete foundation for adequate facilities or additional space that's relatively deep construction?
I prefer to, although not. The existing facility has a whole base that is basically, they're used because, you know, once you get away from the things storage, you have to provide space for, you know, ABA requirements, anything that you have off the first level. Either require an elevator or it has to have a space satisfied on the ground. So, try to, try to provide everything on the ground. Floyd, I'm just getting a place.
Well, isn't, isn't major space considered, can be considered non-public space?
It's a place, though, you have, you have, you have to buy a people on food, they, that's Floyd.
It's, I think, we think about, we looked in the past, but nowadays, in order to, it's, there was a few places that could get away with that, but they do that because they're not, they're, the other spaces aren't available to everybody, but part of, well, I guess part of the grant process requires that we meet ABA versus ADA requirements, which the big one is that all levels have to be accessible versus, you lose some of the exceptions. There is, there is a minor exception that's like, I think some places have used, which stuff, which stairs in, you lose some of your square footage on whole floors, because you have to have stairs. You have to start, and it's, this site is fairly flat, and the way it's situated, the thought process, to go back to this, I guess, is should 30, 40 years down the road, there is ways to expand this on the site, and it would be probably cheaper up front than trying to go to a basement with an elevator. Thank you. That kind of cover that all right? Since you're the suspect, subject expert on that.
Part of the, probably having a site was to provide an opportunity where the fence, uh, vehicle contest is, the building would be expanded in that direction. If there needs to be an increase in progress. And that's part of the reason why we've held the building, using the power of the fire, as well as the fact that remaining for the staff require more fill, um, to be, that's a closed down device. So, the, the best location we came to was, you know, where we've shown it. It's facilitating a minimal driveway entrance and all, allowing it to, you know, relax.
Hi, my name is Colleen Chambers. I live on Harvest Lane in Melvin Village. I'm wondering if the police department provides a breakdown of officer use of time? For example, how much time is spent on traffic violations versus wellness checks? And as well as how often we need our evidence blockers, how often someone's in custody, statistics like that?
Um, we have in the past provided somewhat those sort of details. Certainly be willing to, if it shows up for you offline, um, I guess I'm more prepared to talk about the building. But it all depends on staffing, is how much time we get to spend on different things, so, and then all the service that we come in.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is that the, the building needs speak directly to how the police officers use their time, so that's why I'm interested. I will certainly be happy to follow up with you about that.
Thank you. Anyone else on the line?
I'm sorry, hand time.
Go ahead, sir.
See, that's looking at the, looking at the plan here. You show a conference room in the back area there, and I'm wondering if you had public going to that area, they would in turn have to pass through, if I read it correctly, some of your departmental activities. I'm wondering if you split a lot of that conference area a little bit, and remove your offices, whatever. It's just a concern that depending on who the people order, they need to pass through supplemental or work areas that might be processed.
That's a good point, it's been brought up, and I know some places set it up so that maybe a meeting room is kind of outside the more secure envelope, if you will. I've been to Hudson PD, for example, a while ago, I don't know if it's still laid out this way, but you came in the lobby. To the right was the meeting room, and straight ahead was dispatch, and then to left was the actual police station from there. It's a discussion we had and looked at. Kind of the way this ended up was to make it accessible. We need to be able to, if we use this as an operation center, we need to expand, so it's, so it would be out in here. And I guess the part of the thought, maybe that the, you know, the fire station has a meeting room, the library, the new library has a meeting room, we've got this building, I mean, I don't know how much, how much demand there is down or will be, but that's certainly a point that has been brought up and something we've discussed at times. It's not, it's not an invalid point, but is there a demand for it either that would warrant?
I'm just thinking, perhaps.
Yeah.
Activities.
You know, in the, in the original, when there were combined facilities, the way it would work would be laid out between both, kind of both settings, if we will, with the fire station was, you know, the fire station on one side, police on the other, and just common through the middle, that could be segregated from both. It's a little tougher to try and meet the footprint and still have accessibility to, you know, have a squad room accessible to people right here quickly, or if somebody wants to come in and have a street meeting, the supervisor, it's part of balancing act, but it is a thought, certainly is, and it's not, not an invalid thought either, but.
If I may, I'd like to ask you another question. In terms of communication?
Yep.
I know the detail, once the building gets approved, would there be communication capability in your office area, up the front, back and forth, so that if your ELC were to operate, you've got communications back there, you have to provide for. But sooner or later, whether it's our present fire state, you have in your area, in your margin, reception room, you know, for your offices, your administration.
The administration would probably have that.
Would you have communication capability there, if you were to go to that process, it's important, though.
That would be the intent, it'd probably be like a consulate in there, is what we, what we have now. There's a consulate here, and it could be a branch over there, or it could be movable too, it's not a huge item.
May I have your name?
Doug Parker.
Doug Parker?
Staff in the building, face this other question. Is it designed to utilize solar energy or some other heat?
So, it's, the idea was to... I don't see stuff on here, except this way, right? So, the idea is to put a, put a solar array, photovoltaic array out here. That's kind of the pit down below, if you will.
Now, here's the roof.
Uh, how would you guys?
The, the layout of the building that we came to, it's more for roof facing, south, maximize exposure. And it's really kind of visual, how we could lay out the building, keep it back for the PV system. And there is some additional cost to doing your ground mass, but there's, there's a lot more benefits by having your ground mass. You're not tied to, you finish, don't have to take, the PV system off the roof to address this, changing the roof initially. It's just keeping those elements separated in the long term, as a cost factor. There is some upfront costs, obviously, to create a miraculous with the program, but it's not a substantial difference, right? And it's just visual, the building, the certain orientation, which didn't really suit the site, the layout. Again, it's schematic, so if it was designed that they wanted to get a roof, something in certain theme to explore, but I'm just cautious with that, because you're really tying yourself into that old roof for a more long-term issue with roofs. The roof better be exactly like that, because the PV system, it goes off.
Show our interview panel, the panel design.
Well, yeah, but we have carried budget items for our ground mass, bracket system, and the solar panel, sit on that. We didn't conclude for just on the roof, again, it could be slightly deeper, but it's not, it's not a, a large pick at that.
Scamatically, it's not shown on here, but it would be towards this area back here, where that bracket.
Go ahead, sir.
Yep.
So, so those that are familiar with this property will recall that toward the back of the property is an old gravel pit, all right? So, the slope of that ground is, makes insulation of a ground-mounted solar array much less complicated than when you're working on a piece of flat land. And, and because of the bowl shape, it could actually be aimed for maximum solar gain.
I'm back listening. So, to the point that, you know, we're going to have for heat, electrical or?
Yes. It's mostly the schematic design is for electric heat pump, uh, leading at AC, which obviously would benefit from photovoltaics to be installed at some point, to reduce money costs. Whether the photovoltaic side, if you cover all the electrical components, the building, it's, 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 right? But certainly, you cover a substantial amount of the electrical components. We came to the conclusion that with having the requirement for AC and the building, that the heat pump system would be sped up, you could not basically duplicate delivery systems if you were to go with the more top water, spoiler, and you're also getting away from the office people. Obviously, there's even more bad for electrical costs, down, more cautious for like generation.
So, with the, with the three phases, it's going to take the one, the heat pumps. So, with the, with the three phases, it's gonna take to run the heat pumps that we had heard about before. Does anyone look into that and is there gonna be space in the building for the backup system? Heat system, whether it's oil, propane, because you're gonna need it to the heat pumps, because everything in that area is in front of us. So, it's moved with ice pool or somewhere else, there's time to put in the backup system. The new buildings that we see, they come in, houses, they have a backup furnace system for when the, the heat pump gets heated from your pole.
Well, I, I would not entirely agree with that. The, the newer heat pump power design was subject to, again, to be very, so this topic, the message is very much a schematic. There is opportunity to add a backup system, which is kind of desire that clearly there could be some positive to that. Uh, there is to be done to begin, there's a couple of heat pumps that would recycle. You would, that's certainly back, after it's done, that's all built. There is a good part of it, the design can easily handle our situation.
Is there anyone who's not spoken, who'd like to speak or ask a question?
The second meeting we've had. At the first meeting, we kind of went into the, uh, remnants of what town meeting is total. Which we need to address aside. There's been no addressing besides, there are a couple of other issues that I think we have to hit. Get your pencil out. I think the administration's on the wrong side, it needs to be over here, so it's directly in contact with the chief and deputy chief. I think the squad room and the conference room can be coded on it. Put into this area, put the squad room in this area. Custodial and mechanical need to be over on this wall here. The evidence areas and mechanical needs to be over here. The evidence areas need to be squashed. There's probably 400 square feet in this building, say. That's my feeling. And we need to look at that. I think without, if we continue on this road of just presenting one design over and over again, we're gonna fail next March. And I don't enjoy failing. And I think, and we do need a, a police station. Whether or not we need this large evidence base, or whether or not that could be somehow integrated into this other part of the building. Current garage is, sits now at our current police station. I don't know if this ever been found. Hopefully, it's a decision, it's not like we're asked to do this. But I think we need to rearrange the rooms a little bit and look at this fitness, come up from squad room, break room. Those square footages and see if we can't get some sort of common use out of a smaller area than what we're trying. Until we do that, I think we're gonna run more and more of this.
Anyone else? I'm just trying. Go ahead, sir, Doug.
Doug Harper, yes. I know that, I'm known for detail. One of the things that regards to what the rearrangement of the rooms, you just spoke about. But I assume the entrance for staff is parked up there in the center back?
Yes.
It needs to be ID. The question I have is, where would your on-duty vehicles be in relation to that entrance? They need to be close by.
Yeah, they'll be back here. Or in here.
What I did to Wyndham Building, put them down there. We go into that, that little detail, right, to be boiling, so that simply went online, go through some of that stuff.
Yeah, so, correct, the staff entrance is right here. And we'd be parking back here.
The other, the other concept, again, because they prefer, first, is thinking about our monthly winter seasons. The ability to have one or more vehicles that's, uh, if you had to call somebody back in to have it inside. Having those two varieties, very wonderful.
The problem with using our building, our garage now, today we use it for storage, some of our stuff, we have in a space floor. But even when we didn't need that extra storage space, they made them too small. So you'd be hitting doors, or you'd be, or you couldn't, you had to pick which end of the car you got in or out of. It was just too tight lengthwise. It wasn't big enough so you could walk around a car. You had to be to the back so you could get in the trunk, get in the, you had to pull in the oil pressure so you could get in the hood. If you pulled in all the way, you'd get into the trunk. The other part that's not really shown here is, these are, essentially this garage, not very similar to what we have, but a little bit larger. Why? Because as I just mentioned, the ones we have are too small. It'd be narrow.
And then they have an educating for what, what you need.
And part, the other part is, when you do something like this, you've got to be able to secure, make sure there's nothing that people can grab in there. That, that shouldn't have access to it. For example, in one of our prior iterations, there was actually a separate secured room off the garage that was like caged and locked. So that tools would be in there, broom shovels, so nobody could pick it up and use it as a weapon. I've been in that situation before, it's not a comfortable thing, especially part, you don't see everything, it's gonna be in these areas. There'll be, I suspect there'll be like a spray station there, like an eye wash station. A, for the chemicals that might be used working on a vehicle, but also for OC spray, so people can flush their face. You also have a gun locker there, so that, you know, officers, before you take somebody out of a secured vehicle, you secure your weapons. There'll be a gun locker, they're usually in the Sally Court area, or they're in here. Usually they're in the Sally Court, so that way you can secure them and watch the person in the vehicle before you bring them in. Because this area right here is, is locked down, and there should be no weapons in this area. So, so some of the square spaces will be taken up with the double eye wash station. Uh, they'll take it up with the, the guns. There might even be a, it should be a, we don't have one now, we should have one in the clearing barrel, or a clearing station for clearing weapons. That would also be in some, ideally in a place like that, that's away from the rest of the building. So that's, you know, so, these are essentially not a, a place where we have, essentially, but making them more usable. We can't use them for what we have now, because A, there's storage for some degree, but we have had vehicles in there before.
I think you've done a great job, and, you know, the someone spoke earlier. I think, you know, having some systems, maybe sit out on it, if we can talk about a shared building. And rearrange the furniture and then present it again, I think you could, it would be an excellent step to, to make it sell better. That's what's got to be, appreciate it, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
So, we're here today just to talk about the building, not so much about the costs or the, or the needs, is that correct?
Correct.
So, we're here today to talk about the building, not so much about the costs or the, or the needs, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, I, I would like to suggest that we strongly look at an alternative way to heat the building. Heat pumps are a wonderful piece of engineering. But the problem is, you're tied to electricity, which in this area is expensive. And also, uh, the drop off in heating capacity, uh, when you start to get close to 70 degrees, is pretty great. On the other hand, if you go with propane or oil, you have an opportunity to warehouse fuel during off-seasons. And then use it during the winter, and sometimes that can result in a significant cost saves. I would respectfully suggest that we think about heating this building primarily with one of the older technologies. But at the same time, do whatever we can to rough in, uh, heat pump capability. So that if it becomes feasible, cost-wise in the future, that you can switch over. But I, I think to primarily depend on the heat pumps would be a mistake in terms of operating costs. I have heat pumps in my house, they work great in the fall, in the spring. When we get into the mid-peak of the really cold months of winter time. Uh, they are lacking, and the tendency is to turn the button, and the electricity costs go up. And it's pretty, pretty relentless.
Anyone else?
That's good, Kerry, architect, retired. I was part of the, uh, study committee, yeah, 2014, that did the report then. And, uh, the result we see now, the square footage, the room disposition, is very much a key to what became of course, ultimately for. That would elevate one observation, the estimated construction cost, in fact, 2014 was 1.3 million. Now, we're looking at 1.7 million. That is an actual increase for a special town, who is in a non- decided to affect them. But I, uh, in researching the facts of this building, looking for a character in all of this street. We find that the state public safety officials and town insurers are both highly critical of the situation we have in town. It's totally inadequate, existing, least facility. That would make sure the, not the entire building, but the rest of the, of all of this project. But what, uh, what a question I have for the faculty now, is assuming construction, what the fact is to accomplish construction of your building. I'm observing that, uh, with the construction of the, uh, prior rescue facility, you did a construction management, you did take it out of college. But what are the facts now?
Well, I'm, having done a few projects, I'm in favor of having a construction management system put in place. It's, it's really the only way to guarantee that you're getting the product that you want. And picking a good construction manager is not that, not as easy as just calling one phone number, so. Would I, would have to put it out for bid, and then interview, and go from there. So then you have your construction managers watched over by your architect, who's looking at the specifications. And then everybody's looking at the contractors who's putting the building up. Our hope is that we're gonna put together money enough so that we're not financing a lot of it. We've got a grant that the chief has worked on, we've also got money put away in a capital reserve account. I don't know that we'll get to the point that the library got to where we could do it all in one year. But it would certainly be nice to do it in no more than five. But that said, we have to look at the final numbers. I don't think the numbers are gonna go down from last year, because construction costs have not dropped off. Material costs certainly have not dropped off. So it's a challenge, and if we, if the town decides not to do it in 2000, or 2021, the cost just keeps escalating. As you noticed, 2014 costs were $300,000 less than 2020 cost, so. Longer you wait, the more money it costs you. I think it's back when I was a selectman the first time, we could have built the fire station as it stands. And with an additional police station included, for a little less money than they spent on the fire station ultimately. Waiting if that's generally the best answer.
Anything else from the board?
I think to go with that, to go with that, as part of our, the grant, is we have to have an outside. A, they have an architect that will be supervising the work, working with our architect to make sure they meet the standards, meet the needs. And there's no excessive cost built in. With that also, they mandate basically a, some sort of a check and balance, supervise a, uh, a structure management. You can do, but you also, you need to have a clerk of work, if you will, like separate independent. So we don't, so we have that sort of check and balance to make sure that it's not, uh, it'll, it'll be construction management, I believe is the way the selectmen want to go. But there's that check and balances between the two architects and, and a clerk of work, if you will, oversee. Some of that.
Kerry. Kerry. C-A-R-Y.
Is there anybody who would like to speak again?
I'd like to make a statement. My name is Lloyd Wood, and I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I'm a native of, uh, Tucktonboro, I'm 72, and someone said if you lived here all your life, and I said, not yet. Anybody would like to study this? Here is the study for the police station in 2004, 2010, 2012, and 2020. If you would be able. Let me tell you, we did a great job. This is the fourth meeting we've had like this, and I'll just make a couple of comments. First of all, has anybody talked to the neighbors and explained to them what we're doing? Hey, we're not gonna take down your major town. Has anybody talked to the neighbors? Yes, the neighbors of the police? Yes. No, of, of the site.
You mean Perkins?
Yeah.
Um, they did call, they were, they expressed concerns about, um, making sure it's far enough away from this property line, so they could keep their, along there. That's what, uh, I didn't, they, they called, they returned their call, but she actually spoke to another officer, that's it.
And it's, any of the other abouters? I know I'd appreciate a phone call if.
I talked to Wayne.
Uh, the other thing is, what's the total frontage on that lot? On, on Middle Road? 500 feet, 1,000 feet? What is it?
What's your fraternity, these plans, you guys?
Okay, I'll, I'll make the question easy. What percentage of it is currently usable? That you can drive off the road and drive onto the lot? 50%? 60%? Hell of a being there, isn't it? So have we maximized the lot? Anyone thought about that? The fourth meeting, I've asked that question.
Well, I think, I recall your question was about filling, like covering that, that drainage area and filling over that, correct? I mean, that, I suppose it's doable, but that would involve permitting and cost, I suspect, I'm not.
So that hasn't been investigated?
But that was, but we tried to use what was accessible now to its maximum, I believe, so to answer that.
I don't want this to be a urinating contest, I'm against the chief. I want him to have the equipment and the department he needs to make it safe for you and I to protect him. I happen to go by the Bible. International Association Chiefs of Police, that build, that's a great, these stations. Part of it also is space standards. For example, on page 54, it says on your site layout, and I'll read it. There need to be two entrances and exits for police vehicles. This recognizes that should any one entrance be closed due to an accident, uh, whether police vehicles disabled, it will still be able to enter and leave the station. So the fourth meeting, attention, we need two entrances. And the next four meetings, I won't mention. Records area. Makes no difference whether you're a small town or four officers, or, uh, a larger city. I go here to space standards, and it says records area. Minimum 500 square feet of storage. The other formula is for every workstation, every person who is generating paper, multiplied by seven. multiplied by seventy square feet. I mean, that's, that's what the, the standards are. The conference room. For the fourth meeting in a row, I'd say, why can't we make the conference room multipurpose? So that people can come in from the outside and not interfere with the operations. The chief, fire chief isn't getting up the fire station, but they had a compartmentalized building and you helped on the committee, sir. All right, this material, this lot here, in the center is your garage where your vehicles are, the doors are locked in the center, there's your storage area, secure area, your offices, and then the conference room. Anyone in town can use it. They can be doing budgets or whatever. Nice job. What would it cost to reconfigure the exterior wall? I would bring it up at the next meeting. Heating. Since I'm a member of board of selectmen, heating is here and they went with a twenty-six thousand dollar grant to tell it stole, that takes care of the bad jack. At the Piper House, they insulated the building in their special units that go on the walls so different zones can heat and circulate the air, all this without reasonable cost. At the transfer station, they have, the buildings aren't used for two and three days at a time, but it's radiant heated floor and the boiler kept going out of the, and Claydale will go work for the town and operate it there. I'm a member of the fire department. I also work for the school district and I heard the fire chief speak. He understated the issues. You need to listen to him. Heating and use of electricity, I am concerned about. This guy here, when he was with the county, saved us twenty-four and five million dollars on the nursing home. Please listen to him. This guy here, been on the board, you can talk to him about phase three power or some other issues. I listen to him. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of me? Thank you for listening. And you know what, folks? Thank you for coming out. Would anybody else like to speak? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a question. Generally, when something is do, when the town is doing this kind of work, is it, is it considered to the state to come in, take a look at the plans perhaps at this stage and either make a comment to you or to make a suggestion? Is that what is, or is it?
I must agree with the state review. Obviously, the, the architect, the USTA Development Authority will be looking at them. That's probably the most common stat and I would not believe any other reviews that necessarily happen. I'm not sure, but I don't think so. Would it be useful? I don't know who would, I would have a distinct, and I don't know, based upon what I've seen lately with some of the stuff, I think that they would kind of defer and not, they'd have reservations. Some, I don't know what department would do it, some departments might have reservations about doing that because they incur some liabilities, you know, but I, that's my take on some of the stuff I've heard lately with the USC type reopening, especially, you know, a lot of times, a lot of the town was contented was because town made real decisions and then they died and so they gave some areas, towns. It certainly would not think, probably would not be a bad idea to run it by, if you have primex and any thoughts in what there are insurers that we use presently and probably looking forward, they're the ones who really were critical of the way we're set up now. But we have. One of the things they said is we cannot bring anybody that's arrested to where we are because of, there's no segregation of this area dysfunction. We have to be done right with everybody else and that's possible, possible for a lot of reasons. But the state, I don't think the state would get involved, other than I did have to submit the grant application to the OSI to see if it was a reachable impact, I think, for them to be just aware that this is happening, other than that, there's no other. OSI is basically state planning, but it's more planning nature. And then there would be probably along the way, the need to have the state. There might be some reviews, but not relative to a building per se. There might be something like, may have to find out those, it's architectural, archaeological site that might need to be signed off on like we had to do for the grant of the generator at the, at the town hall, minor check boxes, we have to do, not, not reviewing the actual building itself. Can we look at the physical size of that garage? I don't, I should, select, what's the, what's the physical size of the garage here? Uh. There was, I guess, a report saw here. Might be something on the report, right? Uh, this was the.
Gentlemen, can I make a, you folks available if someone had a specific question? We've got an appointment. If there's a specific question on the plan, they've agreed to make themselves available.
Thirty-one feet wide.
Did you say thirty-one?
The combined, combined thirty-one.
Thirty-one wide?
Yes. And probably it looks shorter. That's just not showing on that one. Almost square. It looks like it's almost square. I would say the other direction might be. Probably approximately.
Another question, the original style reports that were designed to go on the end for White River was a thousand square feet, two thousand nine.
Well, first of all, thank you for, members of the public showing an interest in coming out. We appreciate it. Please come back and visit us. We're going to take a pause if people want to leave and then there'll be a short public session and we have an appointment scheduled to come out. We'll, we'll take a five, five minutes. Give you a chance to stretch.
Boy, someone's asking what, thinking of how fast with five minutes, are you continuing on this or are you?
Nope, going on to.
Very good, thank you.
Was Brian, Brian Cranston? Brian Cranston? We have to have a few minutes of public input by law and then you're up, thank you. And I'll call on you once. If no one from the public wants to talk about or whatever they want to talk about, we'll go to your, your, your appointment. You can stay there or you can come up here. Great, I'll call you, thank you. Thank you for your dedication.
I was bored, I was trying to do that. I don't really all know what it is, you know. Yeah, you guys are rubbing, yeah?
You're going to do the minutes? You're going to do the?
I'm going to do, uh, public input.
Okay.
Uh, by law, we put a two minutes aside to every meeting after public hearings for public input and then Brian, you'll come up for your appointment. This is open to any member of the public who wants to speak on any, anyone on the line?
I mean, they're on, but it's a little like that.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll jump over review and approval of minutes. Let's go with our ten o'clock appointment. Uh, Brian Cranston, you can speak from there, sir, or speak at your, at your table.
We're going to the appointment.
Wait, wait.
Can I pull my, my phone off?
That's easy. Easy, how are you?
How are you? Well, my name is Brian Cranston and I, uh, own the house and property at Five Abbott Drive, where I've lived for twenty-five years during the summer. My deed also includes the road Abbott Drive. I'm here today seeking permission to change the name of the road from Abbott Drive to Cranston Road. I've been thinking about this for a couple of years. I spoke to Jack about it about a year ago. He told me it was possible to do, it was a process. He said it would involve neighbors approving or knowing about it. So I started talking to the neighbors and I would say that all of them were, were concerned about the impact it would have on their address. Some of them were concerned about the legacy of, of the previous owner who I bought my place from, Abbott. They'd like to preserve the name of Abbott. So I thought about these two considerations, which are very valid, and I looked at the existing property and I came up with a plan that would fit in with the existing area quite nicely, would actually simplify the addresses of people, but most importantly, it would keep everybody's address the same and was also preserve the Abbott name. So I'd like to show you my proposal. I did a, a quick little diagram of what the property looks like and, uh, this is Route one oh nine and this is Abbott Drive. Abbott Drive goes from one oh nine right down to my property, my garage. Frequently I get people coming down, going to one of the neighbor's houses, they come down to my house because it's Abbott Drive all the way and, and they're confused. I tell them how to get to where they want to go. That's not a big issue for me, that, that doesn't bother me. But I did have some personal reasons why I, I wanted to change the name. So I came up with this plan, which would essentially move the Abbott Drive name down to the first house. The road goes in to Thompson's house and then it takes a left and goes up by Bear's house, then it comes back out, crosses with Abbott Drive and goes over into, uh, the Gordon's house and the Youngsmith's house. So if I move the name Abbott Drive down to this point, then that would preserve number one, which is Thompson's, number one. If somebody really was confused, they could go all the way around and get to number three, which is Bear, or the preferred way obviously would be, would down what would become Cranston Road and take the second right if you want to go to Bear's. And that would take you right into Bear's. That would be number three, uh, Abbott Drive. And if you wanted to go to Gordon's or to Youngsmith's, you could down Cranston Road and take first left on Abbott Drive. And I would put a second sign here that said Abbott Drive. I do this at my expense and I do this one at my expense. So that's my plan. It's pretty simple. It would really, I think, simplify people who were coming into the area, going to one of these houses to get to there, to get to those locations easier than it is right now. So, uh, that's about it.
This is not a town road?
Not a town road, it's a private road. I've been maintaining the road for twenty-five years.
It's actually two roads?
Pardon?
It's actually two roads?
Well, it was, it's a little complicated because the area was reconfigured a while back, actually before I got there. So the, the old roads, if you will, are there and they became driveways and those are what I'm proposing.
But they're, they're all connected?
Yeah, they're all connected. Exactly.
You take that first right, that's not really a driveway, that's actually a road?
It's a driveway and a road that goes in and it cuts to the left at Thompson's house. I spoke to, unfortunately, Mr. Thompson died a while back and his wife died this year, but I spoke to his son and he said he didn't have an issue with doing that. But there is a road that goes from the Thompsons up around, comes into the Bear's driveway, comes out, then goes into this access road, if you will, or driveway.
Are those public ways now?
Public, by public you mean?
I mean, if I went down in my truck and I drive through that, take that right, go through that driveway, take a left and go up to Thompson.
Well, you could, there's, uh, there's some, there's some obstruct, a little bit of, uh, brush and stuff up there by Bear's, but that's, that was just recently put there. But, you know, everyone's, used to walk that way and it used to be open and, uh, I don't think it's a big problem.
So, so what you're proposing is to add a new, and, and move an existing name?
Exactly.
And the existing name will be on, will be shifted from the road to the driveways?
To this driveway, yeah. Going around and then, and then it would go.
When Thompson goes in, I'm sorry, when Thompson goes home this afternoon, no, next one down, is that Thompson right there?
This is Bear's.
Okay.
This is Thompson's.
Okay. The second.
This one.
Right. When they drive in there tonight to go home, are they, they're not taking the first right, they're taking the second?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what they would do.
So that's how they get the number in their house? It's whatever number that is off of that, out of.
Yeah. This one's one, this one's three.
Yeah.
I'm five, and seven and nine are over here.
And seven and nine share that driveway?
Yeah, they share it.
All right. Yeah, let me. And, and, and you want to change the name because you've been maintaining the road?
No, uh, I have a personal reason, I don't mind sharing it with you. I don't have any male heirs and, uh, I, uh, I'm thinking, you know, we have made arrangements to give this property and land to my grandkids who don't have my name. And I was thinking that it would be nice, it's a legacy. the name Cranston was on that road. Uh, because, you know, once my son dies, once I die, there may be no real remembrance of us. And I'd just like that to be that way. Um, kind of like the way people feel about Charlie Abbott and how his name should be preserved because he was in that area. And was well liked by, and known by some of the neighbors. Few of them didn't know him. But some of them there know him pretty well.
How do we want to proceed? Does this need to correspond, you know, to people who are neighbors? Are they in someone's?
Yeah, I mean, it's a private road. I mean, obviously, there's a crowd, some people want to speak. But it needs to be a group decision if there's going to be a change. I mean, I'm not in favor of just really merely changing street names. I appreciate your personal position. I'm in the same position. I have a daughter. I'm gone. When I'm gone, I'm gone. But that's really beside the point. I mean, there's all other complications like 911 and all those other nonsense.
Does the board have a problem if one or two people would like to speak, let them speak?
I don't know. I'm fine.
Okay. Is there anyone who's a taxpayer who would like to speak? Okay, stand up, give your name and welcome aboard. Hi there, how are you?
Yeah, I'm Lauren. I live at nine, over there.
Did you submit correspondence?
I did, yes. Um, I have been at my property my entire life. Uh, I have owned it myself for about twenty-five years. Um, my family has owned it for almost seven hundred years. I think that what Brian is proposing is really inappropriate because that's going, making people drive in a private driveway across the Bear's property, which is not a driveway anymore, and using their driveway to come out. And I see no point in it. It's, and it's going to make, I am the only one that lives here full-time. And it's going to complicate my life in that it's already hard enough for the, that I'm going to find me. I think by complicating a private road, which is so small, it's going to make it just that much difficult. And I understand his wanting to have his name remembered, but I also do not have an heir. And so I think maybe I think, why not name it Gordon Road? Because I don't have an heir either. Um, I just think it's complicating a lot of unnecessary things. And I think it's just insane.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do love maintaining it.
Is there another taxpayer who would like to speak? Give your name, sir.
I am Charlie Bear from Three Abbott Drive. And I agree with Gail that the name change on the road would be confusing. There aren't really two roads. There is only one road, the driveway swap. It's part of the old road. It goes from the Thompsons to my driveway, which is discontinued. Uh, the section that, um, went into Mr. Cranston's place has been, you know, also discontinued. Nobody uses that, but it's not a road. There's one road there. And right now, it's called Abbott Drive. That's how people access our various houses. Perhaps Mr. Cranston won't want to consider naming his driveway Cranston Road, along driveway that comes off of the main road. And I think changing the original name of the road, Abbott Drive, kind of obscures the history. The Abbott's built the road over and up to here, you know, a hundred years ago. About the same time you did. My family's been there since the forties. We knew the Abbott's for over fifty years. They were great people. And, um, I know they went through difficulties themselves and we, I know they had an invalid child, like being institutionalized. And Mr. Abbott has no heirs carrying on his name either, nobody alive for that. And I think for historical reasons, I'd like to keep the name the way it is. And it'd be less confusing for everybody's address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment or ask a question?
Of course.
Is there any, uh, property right, uh, involved in here? I mean, the fact that I own the property, I pay taxes on it. Do I have any right at all to do something?
Do you own from 109 in?
Yeah.
The whole fifty foot right away?
Yeah, about fifteen, twenty feet. Now, I don't disagree with what Gail or, uh, Charlie said in the sense that, uh, it seems kind of interesting that they don't want their driveways turned into a road. Essentially, mine has been. And I'm not really asking people to go in Thompson's and up through his. They would continue down the main road that I own and take a right into his place, and it says number three. If they wanted to go to Gail's or Youngsmith's, they'd take a left. I don't see how it could be any simpler. Right now, it's confusing because this one road was in and there's four branches off of it. And the one that comes down to me is the direct one. So I get everybody that doesn't know where they're going. So...
I guess that poses two questions. First of all, what's Gail's deed look like? Is it, um, is there a right of way? It's been issued for off of Abbott Road. And Abbott Road's been there for a long time.
Any adverse questions?
Well, no, it's just, yeah, at the end of the day, if it's been a public road or a semi-private road even, for over twenty years, it's really, I don't know that you've got any property rights that are defensible.
No, it's my understanding that the town, I just believe the body can change the name of the road. We just can't.
No, I was looking into that this weekend and I'm not sure on a private road we have the authority.
I have a couple of questions. I want to be fair-minded. One of them is, I want permission from everyone to take my little car down and take a look. You know, I'm a lifelong resident here, so...
Yeah, me too. And I don't know if I've ever been out of it. I think I respect people's privacy.
Well, there's another compliment is, Jim, all of you have made my job easier. You know, we have an edge check weapons at the door or a pistol cup of water. And a naked joke of, but you know, these are the days it's fun to be a smart one, so. Tell you what, why don't we table this, uh, this issue? Uh, anyone who wants to put add correspondence, please feel free. Uh, I know that I'm going to go ahead.
How far is it from where the last driveway turns off to the left and to your house?
From the fork.
The fork, okay.
Go on.
From the fork to your house?
Um, it's about maybe a third or a quarter of the distance of the whole road.
Okay, so.
So I have one more question. If it's considered a public road, can the town of Tucktonboro plow it?
Well, no, it's not considered, it, it's a private road, but unless you post it, you know, no entrance and all the rest of that stuff at the head of that road, the public can drive there. It's sort of like having a shop in front of it. Anybody can drive into the parking lot and park. There's public access over that road, so... I mean, and you don't all have to get together and put a gate up or put a lot of signage up to keep people out. I don't know how much traffic you'd get.
But as far as turning it into a- Folks, camera and recorder, can we pick up one voice at a time?
As far as the town taking it over, that's a whole different process. That's, we just did it up on Willand Road where we took over
Well, that was already, that was already a town road. We resumed maintenance on it.
Yeah, we changed it from class six to class five.
Why is this confused? When you said public, uh, I just wondered about that. But, uh, the only reason I think people come down there is either they live there and they have the right of way to do it, or they want to deliver something to somebody that's there, or they want to visit somebody. There's, uh, nobody else would really get down there because there's no access to the lake, really.
Yeah.
Public access to the lake.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Folks, thank you.
Yeah, I think you can come up with some sort of a decision or as well if there's something, I think, in the next. The chair wants to get down and take a look, so let him do that and then we'll talk about it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Watch him, he's going between his names. You have his name and address and I'll provide the information, right?
Not a hundred percent of scale, but...
Okay. I'll go on to Jack.
Thanks for covering it away.
For, do you have anything to share with us, sir? I will go on for review and approval of minutes.
So I'll move approval of the Friday, June nineteenth work session minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I've got, I've got two. Okay, you're doing the work session.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next is the non-public for June nineteenth, nine a.m. Move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I need to, maybe to be sealed. Yeah, no, I got those that we haven't sealed.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, uh, six twenty-two.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. These are appointments. Next is signature file. Uh, first item of business. My spouse is asked to have, uh, his position with the Conservation Commission changed from a permanent to alternate position. That would be through June twenty twenty-three.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. At the same time, we received the word that Kathleen Murphy has resigned as of July third from the Conservation Commission. So we accept her resignation and send her a letter of thanks.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes three zero. Steve Wingate has to be reappointed, uh, to Conservation Commission as a, uh, a member through June twenty twenty-three.
I'll move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is Laurel Podzen, P O D S E N, to be reappointed as a member of the Conservation Commission through June twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is from the town clerk. And this is the warrant for unlicensed dogs that are shown to four sixty, four sixty-six fourteen. It's a warrant proceeding that needs to go through our office.
I move that we sign the warrant.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Uh, next is a corrected copy of, um, the CG, C B B G environmental checklist to be signed by the chairman. Is this some, Karen, is this some, uh, legal information we need to review in a legal file first?
Yes, that is a separate one, thank you.
This is a separate one? Okay. Have you folks read this?
Yep. Yep. Uh, I'll move that we have the chairman sign.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Anything else to be signed? Pass those things off and put them back in. Okay. Next is correspondence. Uh, the first item is a public information session that we had today. Next is a transfer station. Um, correspondence. Reference to Shred. Is that going to be done in July or August? Karen, do you have any inside information on that?
Exactly. I'm moving, department's heading that up early on.
So, so both the police chief and the supervisor of the transportation have suggested that working toward a date later in the summer would be better for them.
We'll leave it up to them to negotiate a date?
No, Karen's going to schedule the date.
Okay.
That's just their input.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you handle that, Karen?
Sure.
Thank you. And it's my understanding, can the public use this? Is this only for town documents? And you'll get a price, right?
We have a previous call which is related because of all that.
Uh, this is correspondence from Carlson Editorial Services.
Yeah.
Are you interested in that garbage at all or just saying?
Yeah. I, I think that was more aimed at the planning board.
Okay. I can forward that one to the president.
Yep.
Uh, this is just a report of, of legal. On twenty-sixth June, I met with Steve Wingate, chairman of the Conservation Commission. He had me sign the paperwork to complete the latest purchase and easement on the Phelps property in the great meadow that we had previously voted on. He's meeting with a lawyer to finalize the paperwork. And I thank him for his efforts. He is diligently on this project.
Yes.
Uh, this is from Tyler Phillips, uh, that he has decided to leave Horizon's Engineering. Um, have you folks read the letter?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll report on my conversation with Tyler.
Pardon?
I'll report on my conversation with Tyler.
Uh, there was a conversation whether he signed a non-competition. And we'll wait for your report. Um, this is, uh, copy to Bill, reference to Tucktonboro Warf from Kathy Conway. Is that the deed vote? No, this is, um, the company that moved Horizons, right?
Right. And, and they verified that they, that our contract with them has been completed. And that, uh, they were, uh, so there's, from their standpoint, further work being done by somebody else is not an issue.
Okay. Um, this is from Dave Jeffers, uh, reference, um, has men- Hazeman Collection.
Hazard has his ways, yeah.
Uh, six communities withdrew from this year's collection, Osiphe Meredith, Tilton, Tamworth, Northfield and Bridgewater. Um, Osiphe and Meredith will not serve as collection sites. And evidently, he's still negotiating his existing contract and the dates of July twenty-fifth and August first will not change, but still a work in progress. When I, when I, when I spoke to, uh, Clay this weekend, there's still hasn't been just final decisions made from the.
And his, his Lake Search and Hazardous Waste Budget is effectively spent. Right. He has forty-three hundred dollars allocated and he spent forty-one hundred and nineteen dollars, so there's nothing left.
Well, that's, and that's, that's what this is for, yeah.
Right, yeah. Hopefully it's getting organized.
Uh, Clay did point out that people, Tuftonboro can still go to Wolfboro and are doing it, it's just that it's a free.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a letter from Clay who verifies that he's talked to the, uh, appropriate people of the state V E S about advising them what hours they're, like their reopening, their reopening. And that's just, uh, covered. Um, this is to, uh, Larry Gill, uh, reference post-closure monitoring.
Yep.
He has comments about the oversight and this. Um. Karen highlighted that, um, this was June twenty-sixth. Yesterday I received an email from Dave Ford. He wants to organize a meeting to discuss Wolf's plans to remediate the site issues. And that's a work in progress, probably a date in time in mid-July.
Uh, July twenty-third is what?
At ten, yeah.
Right, at ten a.m. at the R I B site.
Now, are selectmen going to be there?
I, I'm planning.
When he talks about remediation, was that, has something else happened, or is it just?
Well, they're still, my understanding is they're still struggling with the how to work without the breakouts. Uh.
Yeah.
And so they've tried a number of things with some limited success. I don't think they've, my understanding is that they've not arrived at, at a solution to get the thing cranked up. Uh. They're still running on some pilot certificates or whatever, uh, demonstrations of ways to deal with it, so.
I have a procedural question, where there's going to be at least two selectmen there.
Well, just, just notice it as a meeting, yeah.
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 So you, oh, you will leave it at that, okay?
Yes.
Yep. Well, that way, if more than one of us is there, it's not an issue.
Yeah.
Covering all our bases. Uh, this is from, uh, Mary Ann Lynch. Please accept my letter of resignation as a member of the C I P. She sold her house in Tuftonboro, moving to Brookfield. I've enjoyed my tenure on the board and thank my fellow members for this wonderful and rewarding experience. I move that we accept her resignation and I ask you to send a letter of thanks for her.
Second.
She also is secretary. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, the next is from Alex Kelly to Rick Highland. This is in reference to Carroll County broadband. Is it okay to put on the website in the bulletin board?
This is a survey, correct?
Survey.
I thought you wanted to, but I.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, did, did it affect your efforts at all with Wolf's getting a sub grant? It was the headline in the newspaper.
No, I, you know, I don't know. I, I'm not certain that they, did they get the grant or?
I, I'm not sure.
I just. Glotting it, I think.
Yeah, they're, Wolf Road since the seventeen hundreds has gone somewhere, nowhere around it.
Uh, next is to the selectman. Um. This is reference docking at Melvin Village. Um, Lee Mill Steamboat Meet has been happening every Sep-, mid-September for forty years. And because of, uh, uh, the situation, the pandemic this year, uh, they were wondering that, um, could they use the dock September thirteen, fourteen, eighteen and nineteen? Um. In the past, we stopped for lunch at the old steamboat dock in Melvin Village, which handles four or five of our boats. Would it be possible for us to tie our boats up overnight on the dates mentioned? I've checked with Lanes Inn and Ambrose Marina, which do not have room to accommodate us. Please let me know if the town of Tuftonboro can help with this.
Uh. Karen, uh, did you check with Andy on that?
Yeah, Andy and Jack, I mean, we started.
But Andy's okay with it?
He didn't even give you a way.
Well, we're, we're the ones that are going to grant or not grant. I'm just looking for their input.
Yeah.
So I, I spoke with Jack this morning and he, he's, doesn't see any issue. Uh, it's middle of September, so it's not high season to begin with. Uh, but I think with any request for special events, it's important that we have the opportunity for folks like the police chief to, to weigh in.
Yeah, I did ask to be that, but I didn't see many, just a new person.
Yeah, because they're the, they're the only ones that are going to actually be involved. And they're just going to make a decision and then.
Where is the Melvin Village Steamboat Dock?
No, it's the Wharf, Melvin Wharf.
Melvin Wharf.
Yeah.
See, everything has to do with steam when you have, you know, if you're hammer, everything looks like a nail. So they're calling it the Steamboat Dock.
Yep.
Because they're in steamboat.
Right.
State of mind.
Yep.
I mean, I, I'm, I think it's fine. I, I just would want to have Andy on board.
Right. So I, uh, I would suggest that we table that and deal with it next week, uh, since we don't have any, uh, uh, haven't had a response from the police chief yet.
Right.
Uh.
Okay. So table.
Um. And if you, Karen, if you could follow up with Andy?
Yes, I mean, I, I'm, I mean, I'm assuming, but I'm not, but.
Well.
But he did, he had something to say, would have, but he saw the email before he watched it, but.
Right.
Um, yeah.
So we're just trying to close the loop here.
Uh, I have a note here that says the budget committee meeting for seven twenty-eight has been moved to eight twelve here.
Right.
Uh, while we're on.
Excuse me.
The budget committee. I know last year they were concerned about, um, health benefits.
Yeah.
And are they going to expect the board of selectmen to handle this? Or is the budget committee going to do their job and do the budget?
No, they're going to expect the board of selectmen to do it. But I've got a couple of, or at least one alternative that, uh, we're exploring. But it's tough to get a number in July when everything doesn't turn out until the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I don't know how, how it would play. Um, actually, you know, I, I got it at reading Forbes magazine and I'm a particular non-fan of Steve Forbes because I think he's not anywhere near as good as his dad was. But that said, I did read the editorial that he wrote about health insurance. And one of the things that some government operations, for instance, the state of Illinois, and I forget the city, but there's a large city in the West are, are doing, is they're creating hea-, uh, health insurance plans with like, uh, ten thousand dollar deductible. Let's pick a number. And then, so reducing the, um, overall cost. And then taking the ten thousand dollar deductible and creating a health savings account. And that goes into the employee's name. So it's a benefit. But if you can reduce your cost of insurance, if you do the math, what they're doing is they're actually reducing the cost of their insurance, even though part of that cost is being pushed into an employee benefit. So we're looking at, at that. I don't know how far we can push a health savings account into the insurance. I think there are limits to the amount you can fund. But it seemed like an intriguing way to, to approach it, um.
Well, and that's what we did in this town when we went to, uh, hire deductible with, uh, with E H S A.
Right.
So this is just taking it further.
Yeah, it takes it all the way out and it, um, and I, not knowing what the insurance costs are for that situation, I can't really push the numbers out and see what the savings actually are.
Right.
The, the major pushback is that you're giving your employee another big cash benefit in the form of an H S A that if they quit, they take it with them. I mean, that's theirs, they don't, but, I mean, the, the, the argument for that is, I don't, I would much rather have my employees, even if they're not my employees anymore, having money to spend than I would putting more money in the coffers of the insurance companies.
Yep.
Sounds like, uh, you're giving it to, to.
So we're working on it, but I think hopefully, and Gordon was here today, and I certainly hope he's a little more relaxed this time about things because it's tougher to get information now because people are not working or the work from home. It's just overall tougher to make things happen.
Well, you know, I have a couple of thoughts, um. It's, um, I listened to the budget committee say our employees are our number one resource.
Yeah.
And yet for certain meetings, I sit there, copy and tap, which, uh, it's nice, you, you take it. The other thing is I think we have five or six employees that, that didn't take their merit increase. You know, didn't yell for them because they're, they're under their track. And I sat down, took one of them and extrapolated, let's see, for two years, he hasn't taken two and a half percent. That's five percent of his salary. Oh, by the way, we're not having to pay social security, retirement, FICA and all that. All of a sudden, you're into ten thousand dollars for that employee. And I'm going to take away his healthcare? Come on now. Thank you for letting me explain. Okay, it's a work in progress. Um. The gentle reminder on the Tuftonboro towns.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you. Um. Uh, the town of Wolfro setting up a meeting with Conservation Commission on the twenty-third, reference R I B pilot test area. We have board of selectmen planning in the process to attend. Okay, next is cable TV franchise information center, information session. This has been reviewed by Kate Miller. Please approve to go to the Granite State News. And this is for August tenth. Um, folks have read it, any problem with it? Full speed, full speed ahead?
Yeah.
Is there one more in there, um, for the C D B G project? We have to do a notice that states that there's no environment, no, no significant environmental impact.
I didn't see it in here.
Can I take a peek and then kind of add two, is that right?
Is that going to notice for Wolfro?
There is something from outside, well, maybe it got stopped, thank you.
While you're doing that, can we go to selectmen's updates?
You've already given us the article update, so go ahead.
Yeah, I did, I went to the Zoom meeting on the broadband, um, talking about the survey. Spoke a little out of turn and saying that I'm sure Tuftonboro would agree to that. Um. That effort, as well as the cooperative extension effort are going simultaneously. And see how it plays out, yeah. Um, I talked with Tyler Phillips at length about the project down at Ninety Mile Bay. As you mentioned, there's no non-compete agreement and the work's been completed, so he'd like to continue. Um. He's working on a response. He's trying to figure out whether Rennie Pelletier's retiring or what the story is for this pushback on getting the whole peer done. And I, I, I think I asked, but I, or maybe he offered to take some pictures of the cement that's failing around that end. Um. And he doesn't see any reason, or he, he didn't push back when I said, you know, we just want to do this once. We don't want to do part of it this time and then twenty years from now do the rest of it. I said, we could have done it today's numbers. So I think we can, uh, maybe set up a meeting with Tyler, have him come in and get a strategy together for how we're going.
I have no problem with, I want to start things on Friday, but if you want to schedule that for a Friday meeting, one way.
Yeah.
You can build it and.
And he's just a.
I promise you, I'll move it along.
He held an, um, head wall. It was a totally different project, we should probably get that accomplished.
Yeah, next.
Um. Did the times. That's one of the things I did, one of those. You guys are real off doing nothing. I forget. I'll remember probably next week, but. That's it for me, thanks.
Um. So, uh, tomorrow, the ag commission has their monthly meeting at, uh, four o'clock. I believe they're having it at the community garden. Um, anybody wants to attend, uh, just observing the garden, things to be, seem to be going along very industriously.
Yeah, it's a busy place.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Uh. Few bumps in the road would, uh, change to, uh, not having people, uh, apply chemicals on their. On, on their, uh, on their plots and the effect that it has on, on other folks. Not unexpected because, you know, it's, it's different than how things have been in the past, but, uh, um. And that's all I have at this point.
I was going over the planning board and I was impressed with the in-depth about the center on Dane Road.
Mm-hmm.
One thing that, uh, having lived next to one of those, was there any comment about Billy's level?
Yes. Yep, there was.
Did, did I miss it?
Huh?
Did I miss it in a minute?
Was it on Dane Road or is it off Dane Road?
Well, it's, uh, it's the big farmhouse, just, just, just headed up Dane Road off to the right, the big old place. We have takes, yeah.
Um. We used to live there. Come in from Billy Williams, it's on the right.
Yes.
Chris Hansi's.
Carl Hansi, he lived there.
I, I don't know, the Wingate farm. Yeah, yeah.
Wingate lived there for a while.
Mm-hmm.
So that, it's off and it's over there.
Yes. Yep.
I read the mail, they're, they're very thorough and, you know, nice job. I evidently missed that, but if you, if you said it was covered, that's great, yeah.
I remember when we, when they used to have the vans up at, uh, where the guy that does coffee, or he used to do coffee in a fossil, uh.
Early Road?
Early Road.
Oh, yeah.
On the Ranger.
Clark.
Boogie Barn.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Okay, next. You go ahead.
I apologize, I don't have that C D B G, um, public notice in the folder. I'm wondering, sorry, do you have to get that sent to them today? Can you move that one of you reviewer with me and prove it? If, what it is, is, um, it was a review done by, and you're saying that this project won't have any significant environmental impact. And it has to be, you know, this equals that one state.
Is anyone who would like to do it? If not, I'll make myself available, I have to go back.
That sounds great.
I have your permission.
Sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, are all the boards filled, to your knowledge?
Um, I have to go back and check. I think the conservation, I have a couple people that have one in here, I think it was.
We saw the budget committee to do.
Budget committee. C S E I know has some.
And, and we had, you had a notice out for. And, and we had, you had a notice out for interested people, right?
Right, the budget committee, so that's for our, we'll be on the notice for next Monday.
Next Monday, okay.
A couple of shout-outs, compliments to our friend Jack. I offered to work with him on replacing some of the broken fence and, and he goes to the garden from the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
He was thinking instead of, people jump over it, it'd make a break, and I said, if you need a strong, long, you know, week back, or vice versa, I'd be glad to help him. The other thing is, he spent seven hours doing the protective boards and pucks of glass, which isn't easy to, to work with pucks of glass. So that's a shout-out to, to him. He just stepped up and did it, and I, I appreciate that.
Let me take a look at it, okay?
Any other business?
Public input.
Any?
Public input.
That's Joe, you might have to meet yourself.
Hello?
Hi, Joe.
Hello, good morning, how are you?
How are you doing, sir?
Uh, it doesn't get any better than this, but, uh, my question's to Lloyd. Uh, you held up a piece of paper and referenced the cable, but I couldn't quite hear, uh, the, the description. Uh, that has nothing to do with a contractor, Anthony, does it?
Yes, it does.
The public information.
It's, it's, it's the beginning of the review process for the, for the, uh, renewal of the franchise agreement.
Yes.
Okay, fine. I would like the one or three of you, just to go back on the past contracts we have had with Spectrum and review that for the things that they never owned up to. I, that's still a hair across my butt, and I don't like it one bit. So, uh, I would like you to at least look at it and say, hey, you're responsible, how about doing it? Uh, and that's my public input.
Joe, do you have a copy of that?
Oh, yes, I do.
Could you reduce it to writing in one of your free moments, and any suggestion you have, I want to listen to?
Okay, I will do that. I got plenty of.
I know in the past you put it in writing and it's been cogent.
Yep, uh, I will, uh, I think I got your email. I will go through it, bring out the excerpts, and send it to you.
All right, just you nail it to Karen, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
If you don't mind. Thank you. Hey, get real soon, my friend.
We're, we're working on it.
Okay, nice to hear your voice. Anyone else on the line, Karen? Okay. Uh, we, we need to go into non-public for some different things, so.
So, I, I'll move, we go into non-public, uh, session for ninety, RSA ninety-one eight, three, Roman two, Perrin L, legal.
I'll second.
All those in favor would yes?
Marcuson, yes.
All of you, yes.